Our last forum tonight will be our school board candidates. We have with us tonight from District 5, Mr. Larry Vance, from District 4, Ms. Whitney Pence and Yvonne Litten, and from District 1, Mr. Mike Shabi and Mr. Brent Wilson. We will start by hearing from the District 5 School Board Candidate Larry Vance, who is running uncontested. He will have three minutes. As the current school board member and candidate running uncontested, you are likely to continue to serve as District 5 School Board Member for another four years. Looking ahead, what do you see as the three most pressing issues or challenges facing the county schools? For each, please describe specific actions or policies you would support to address them.
Well, thank you for the question. Thank all of you for coming and thank all of the hands who put this forum together. I have been asked to identify three pressing issues facing the schools and my view on them. I did not prioritize them because they have to be addressed concurrently. So I put them down alphabetically. And interestingly, guess which was number one? Infrastructure. We have a school in Strasburg, Signal Mob Elementary, which is at 97% capacity, 97% capacity. Holiday Street, which is the only street to access the school, is at 200% capacity twice a day, morning and afternoon, every school day. WW Robinson is at 90% and growing. Triplet Tech is in dire need of more space and more curriculum opportunities. We had a school bus garage. I think that school buses are longer than the service bays, and they are desperately in need of space as well. As you know, there's, it's been alluded to this evening, there is a joint infrastructure committee. It is composed of two school board members, two boards of superv, two members of the board supervisors, the county administrator and superintendent, Shepherd. They met in August. Tomorrow is the first day of October, folks. There is no second meeting scheduled for that committee unless something's changed in the last two hours. But the needs of the infrastructure go on. And let me just say this for the record. Sunny Hook Elementary is getting some portable classrooms. That will help with space. But portable classrooms is not a permanent fixture. Item number two has to do with teacher retention and recruitment. Shenandoah County is not alone in having a shortage of teachers. It's a national problem. It's not the same, folks, filling a teaching position as it is sitting down and ordering something from Amazon, and a few hours later, it's on your front porch. We need to retain what we have because Rockingham County and Frederick County are very nearby, and some people find it convenient to drive even further. So we must remain competitive when it comes to salary and benefits. We need to expand our recruitment area, and we need to look at the intangibles for teacher retention, like teacher self-esteem, support from the administration, and firm adherence to discipline. Did you see the paper this morning? Right here. Above the fold, right-hand column, good positioning. The only story more important on the front page, I'm being told to stop, is the cold case that maybe might be solved. And it has to do with the changing of the SOL scores. And I'm going to finish, Mr. Tom Keever, just hold on here a second. With the team that we have in place at the school board office, I have every doubt that they will unpack the new SOL guidelines and we will succeed on the new test scores for math and English. And again, I thank you for coming. I'm being told to stop.
We will start with one minute and 30-second introductions by each candidate. We did a random drawing at the beginning, and we'll go from left to right with, we will start, I think that's right. I'll correct it myself if I'm wrong. No, I'm right. We'll go from left to right, and we'll start with Mrs. Pence.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you so much for our sponsors for putting on this forum for us. My name is Whitney Pence, and I am a lifelong resident of the Shenandoah Valley, born and raised just right down the interstate in Broadway, and have lived in Woodstock for the last 14 years. I'm a former open-heart surgical technologist in the operating room, now a stay-at-home mom, an engaged parent, and an active community member. I have a fifth grader at WW Robinson and a 2024 Central High School graduate who is now thriving as a sophomore at Virginia Tech. Go Hokies, right, Yvonne? Being a product of both public education and a technical program myself, I would know firsthand the opportunities our schools can provide when they are strong and supported, and that's exactly why I decided to run for this position. I currently serve on the school division's mental health task force, the superintendent's parent community advisory committee, and the library book review subcommittee. These roles give me direct monthly insight into our schools' challenges and opportunities, and combined with my real-time perspective as a parent living these issues daily. I'm committed to ensuring academic excellence, safe schools for all students, strong support for our teachers and staff. School board decisions impact my family directly, just like they touch every family, student, teacher, and staff member across this county. I'll work to keep our schools strong, responsive, and preparing every student for success.
Thank you, Ms. Litten.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I am a native of Shenandoah County. I was born and raised here. I went to Central High School, graduated from Central High School. My two daughters have graduated from Central High School, and I currently have two grandchildren on the central campus. One is a fifth grader and one is also a ninth grader. I received my education in early education and special education from Radford College, and then I went back to James Madison University and got my master's degree in learning disabilities. And I spent the bulk of my career at Central High School working in the learning disability department. Once I left public education, I went back to JMU and I worked as a university supervisor training teachers out in the field. And so I was in all the counties that surround us, Page County, Augusta County, Rockingham County, Harrisonburg City, Shenandoah County, Frederick County, Page County, supervising those teachers and teaching them how to become teachers. I'm also involved in my church. I'm involved in my family life with traveling, and I involved in my children's extracurricular activities. I chose to run for the school board because I truly believe that education is for every child, and every child deserves the opportunity to become the best that they can be and to reach their potential. And that is why I ask that when you go to the polls, that you hear what you hear tonight will lead you to vote for Litten, for your school board representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Shabi. I want to echo everyone else by thanking everyone for being here tonight, for the sponsors and all the hard work every day to put this together. Unlike most of the other people running up here, I am not a lifelong resident of Shen, of the Shenandoah Valley. I've only lived here for eight years, and I have been coming to the valley for about 30 years from my work in civil warfare, battlefield preservation. I never pictured myself running for office, but after moving here in 2017 and getting involved with the schools, I have seen some successes and I've gotten involved. So I feel that my qualifications as a 20-some-year coach and educator, not in the classroom but outside of the classrooms, I've given programs to thousands of adults and hundreds of, and thousands of kids in out-there classrooms. My presence and service on the citizens advisory committee, the library book review committee, and I'm also a part of the mental health task force, gives me an intimate knowledge of how the schools work and how they interact with other areas in the county. And I'm running to help continue the success that I've seen over the last four or five years with Shenandoah County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Well, thank you very much. I'll echo what Mike said at the beginning. I want to thank our sponsors, the Alliance, the Chamber, and Farm Bureau for putting this on. This is an outstanding event. Thank you to the crowd. You've been here quite a while. Good job. It's, it's, the first six, seven hours are the hardest. I find myself extremely fortunate. I, like so many people who have been on the stage tonight, I have grown up in the valley. Other than four years at college, I've lived in the Shenandoah Valley my whole life. My grandparents were farmers in Page County, as were their parents before them, and I, when I was five years old, going to some of the orchards and tasting a Honeycrisp apple for the first time, I thought they had sugar in it. It was so amazing. So our family has, has lived in this valley for, for many generations. As I said, I feel very fortunate that I get to do what I do because of my education. I got a bachelor's degree in accounting, and for the last number of years have been able to utilize that as an accountant, as an employee, running a company's books, and as having my own business. So the strengths I get to bring to the table if elected to the school board are, I'm already familiar with, with the challenges that numbers bring, that budgets can, can give you, and I've had, already had many of those conversations when there's difficult decisions to be made. I'm thankful for the opportunity tonight to discuss these with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the first question. Mrs. Pence, you'll have the first opportunity. The first question is in regards to our teachers. The question reads, "Our teachers are overworked yet are continually asked to do more. If you could help relieve their stress by taking one thing off their plates, what would
I think that the best way to retain our teachers is by creating an environment where they feel appreciated and where they can truly do what they're called to do, and that's teach. One of the things that we could do is to reduce unnecessary paperwork that pulls our teachers away from students and just give them their time back. Another thing that we could do is make sure that our teachers are fully supported in the classroom by the building principals as well as by the folks at central office when there are repeated disciplined behaviors, so that our teachers are constantly dealing with misbehavior and they're able to focus a little bit more on instruction.
Thank you. Mrs. Litten. If you could help relieve their stress by taking one thing off their plates, what would it be?
This is a tough question because as I was moving across the county and talking to different, different teachers, one of the things that struck me coming out of their mouths was the fear that a lot of our teachers have, that if they voice an opinion that is contrary to something that the school board says or something that their, the administration says, that they are going to be singled out. And they have that fear of retribution, and that, and me, being a career educator, that just sends shockwaves through me. What I want to do is to bring positivity in our communication and listening to our teacher concerns. We need to start bringing respect back and trust in our conversations with our teachers and our school staff. Our teachers need to be on board anytime we make decisions. They need to be part of that conversation. We need to find out what it is, solve their concerns, and meet their needs. And, you know, I could go on and on and on about other things, but that's the one thing that our teachers fear. And that, like I said, it just sends shockwaves through me.
Thank you.
I don't think there was any one theme, but I'd say the previous candidates made very good points. I would say I would like to try to take away our lessonary insecurity. The teachers are left out on the limb, and they have, you know, in some cases admins, other teachers in the building, parents, all have saws, and they're up against the, the trunk of the tree, and they're sawing away, and those teachers are left out to hang. So they need support from admin on the southern campus. We've lost some really good teachers this year because they felt they were not being supported by the admin in the building. The retribution, that's a real thing. Trying to provide them, you know, some, some support, both from the school board and by working with the administration and the school directors and the buildings, I think we could help that. You know, one of the biggest things cutting that limit around on is the lack of discipline in the schools. So it's a multifaceted thing, but, you know, there isn't one simple thing to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
I'll echo what candidate Litten said, that, that fear is a problem for teachers. And similarly, and talking to teachers in the county, they bring up that if they, they say the wrong thing, or they're going to get in, they have to double-check everything they're saying and doubt themselves, and they can't, we're taking away a lot of their tools to teach by the ways that we brought politics into the classroom so much. And then after that, if we can let them know we have their back, that, that can be the whole ballgame sometimes. The other tools that we can give them are sometimes give them some of their time back, where they have more time to prepare throughout the day and get done the things that, as some other people have said, that, that we make them do, that there's so many things on their plate. And then finally, professional development. There are many opportunities they have for their career and, and become better at what they do, and the more we can support them on our end, the better it is for them and for our students.
Thank you very much. The second question tonight, and Mrs. Litten, you'll have the opportunity to go first. Exit surveys show that teachers are leaving this county due to a lack of administrative support for discipline. What policies would you support to address discipline in the classroom?
Okay. Discipline, first of all, from having been a career teacher. I can tell you that discipline in the classroom needs to be firm, but it also needs to be fair. And our teachers should be encouraged to take misbehaviors in the classroom and turn them into teachable moments. Our students need to learn that there are appropriate responses for their behaviors, and that regardless of age, this needs to be taught in the school, and it also needs to be taught at home. But most importantly, I want parental support. It is imperative for us to have that in order to be successful in the classroom. And those behaviors, if we don't get them in check when they're in the classroom, and have the support of the parents, those behaviors are going to carry over out into the community, and then we really don't have some serious problems there. I would like to provide support for our teachers who are dealing with difficult students, give them some positive strategies that the schools and the community both can support. One thing I do not support would be a universal discipline policy, because that takes up the human effort, the human component of it. And you have to have the human component where you have the interaction and you have the students being taught, this is the appropriate way to respond. Let's try this the next time. Or better yet, bring in the parents. Let the parents say, "I'm going to support the school." We have to have parent support. They are the key.
Thank you. Mr. Shabi. Sorry. Yeah, we'll continue left to right, my left to right.
The SHOAS CPS has chairs at campuses in a district which filters down to the schools and primarily, you know, may focus on the elementary schools. So I believe consistency across the school division is necessary. So I would support, you know, fair, but universal policies across, because you really can't have one teacher teaching, you know, dealing with the discipline one versus another. There is a lack of consistency there. Parents need to be involved as well. They need policies that CPS is using will involve parents, particularly at a elementary school level, and that faster, and I support that. It's unreasonable for teachers and admin in the school to have to deal with kids who have no sense of discipline or consequences or accountability at home. That's right. That's a major burden, and the more the administration in the buildings takes care of it, the better it is for the teachers, because the teachers should be teaching, not spending so much time on, you know, one or two kids that just work everyone else's day.
Well, I certainly want to defer to the teacher up here. I'm thankful for Ms. Litten and her, her response, and I would echo it, that a partnership, and this is something I've talked about in my campaign, a partnership between parents and teachers is nearly unstoppable. When they're on the same page and working together, the chances of the students succeeding simply skyrocket. So the, the more we can do to create an environment that makes that happen, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Pence.
I agree that discipline should be one of the top priorities in Shenandoah County Public Schools. And as Mr. Shabi said, in this past year, this last school year and this school year, there have been some significant changes. Our classrooms simply cannot function when teachers are constantly managing instead of teaching. I do agree that students can learn from mistakes, but a constant stream of teachable moments, as my opponent has suggested, in the classroom mean teachers spend more time managing disruptions than actually teaching. Discipline issues need clear expectations and consistent consequences. Our teachers need to know they are backed, and the students need to understand that respect is non-negotiable. Our principals must lead on discipline. They should be visible, and a consistent support for our teachers, enforcing the school-wide policies. And our central office needs to also set the tone, as they have, just providing clear, consistent policies. The bottom line is, strong discipline policies backed by the principals and by the central office will restore the order and respect that our community expects, and our students all need to succeed.
Yes, you may, I have 30 seconds.
Again, having been a career educator, I understand that discipline cannot be universal because classrooms and students are different. You have to look at the students that you have in your classroom, and you have to pattern your discipline depending on the type of student that you have. So one method that may work for one child will not work for another child. Again, I reiterate, parents and the school and the teachers have to all work together.
Thank you. Our next question deals with the books in our schools. Mr. Shabi, how can the school board give parents confidence that the books on our library shelves are age-appropriate, support student learning, and reflect the standards and values our community expects?
Well, having served in the library book review committee, this is kind of up my alley. There have been several policies, I believe, in the last two years, and a completely thorough evaluation and assessment process has, has begun. There's been a fair number of views, you know, of, of books initiated by parents, so there are checks and balances in place. I believe that the current policies are more than adequate and should be carried forward. It gives everyone a voice, and, and I haven't seen anything really negative since they started because it's been thorough. The librarians, the parents, the teachers, the administration have all been involved. So I think it's thoroughly handled now, and I don't see any, any reason to change it. So continuing with the current policies.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Whether you're running a business or a government or a school district, one of the best things you can do is to put smart people in charge of certain topics and let them do their jobs. Now, incidentally, that's a statement I can say about many things regarding, regarding the school board, but I think it's also true in this topic. There are already existing these library and book committees, and we can allow them to do what they do and work together to, to make things that keep information accessible to all children.
Thank you. Mrs. Pence.
I am also on the library book review committee, and I believe our school libraries should be filled with materials that are age-appropriate, support learning, and reflect a range of perspectives. It's important that we strike a balance, making sure the students have access to resources to broaden their understanding without crossing the extremes that don't belong in our schools. Parents should always have the right to guide their own child's reading, but it's the school board's responsibility to make sure every book on our shelves is there to support education, growth, and age-appropriate exploration.
Wow. Okay, I agree with a lot of what everybody here has said. Our instructional books, they are evaluated by a committee of the subject area, teachers, administrators, parents, instructional textbooks, all of the curriculum for those textbooks are set by the state. So any textbooks that we get are, are, have to, have to follow the curriculum of the state. The policies that we have in place for the library, library materials, those policies are working, okay? So I don't have a problem with that either. What I really would like to do, and this has always been a premise and a priority of mine, is, is putting trust in the people that we have to run our libraries, our school libraries, and let them pick curriculum books that teachers need to teach, books that cover all genres of learning. We need to make sure that we are trusting our librarians, and I do. I don't think I ever walked into a library in the elementary school or at Central High School and I worked there and could find a book that I thought was totally inappropriate and did not need, need to be there. So I think getting trusting and respecting our librarians and the teachers to choose appropriate content for their grade level goes a long way in creating a positive school climate. So, you know, I have no problem with the policies as they are right now. Down the road, if we see that we need to make changes, absolutely. But right now, I think we just need to trust our librarians, and we need to trust our teachers to put content that is relevant and that is age-appropriate.
Addressed social media. Mr. Wilson, you'll go first. Social media posts continue to polarize our nation. When you become a school board member, will you keep politics out of your official school board social media posts?
I love this question because I'm excited about the four of us on this stage. I'm excited about the idea of running for school board because I'm inspired by the concept of education, because the way education has changed my life. concept of education, because the way education has changed my life, my family's life, so many people's lives. And to the extent we keep politics out of that is the extent to which we succeed. And I am thoroughly happy to keep politics out of social media, the accounts that I'm running as, when I am elected, to say, official accounts, I'm trying to say, sorry about that. So absolutely, I think we can do a lot more together than we can when we're fighting, and there are good ideas all on both sides of any given aisle that we can utilize and have the best possible situation.
Thank you. Mrs. Pence?
I do currently have a social media post for my campaign page, and once the election is over, I do plan to dissolve that campaign page and just keep my personal social media page. Our school board has open meetings, so I feel like the community is able to come to those meetings so that you can hear exactly what is being discussed. There is also video for those meetings, so I do not believe that it is in the best interest of an elected official to have a social media page further discussing what has happened at meetings when that information is publicly available.
Thank you. Mrs. Litten?
I would just reiterate what everyone else here tonight has said about that social media for an elected official, I don't agree with that at all. I do not take my personal political beliefs and bring them into the school board or even into the classroom, because that's not appropriate, okay? My personal beliefs are mine. I would be on that school board, working for the students and for the teachers, and making sure that they get everything that they need, that they are supported. That's my number-one priority. I will not have a social media page where I put my own personal opinions about things that were discussed in the back row. That won't happen.
Thank you. Mr. Shabi?
This is a very good question. I think social media lessens involvement instead of increases it. If you look at any of these become politicized nationwide, whether in that county too, it's not, and it certainly isn't beneficial to education. I don't think any path to experience in, say, the schools. Well, and that includes now. So no. A lot has a social media page probably appearing, but it is family and political flags. You can get that by watching school board meetings, you know, what's going on. Every school and division has its own social media page. So if you're not getting it from there, I don't think you need to get information from this guy individually on social media. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be our final question of the night. It's a broad question. It gives you the opportunity to point out your priorities. It reads, Shenandoah County schools struggle with aging buildings needing repair or replacement. Triplett Tech has had to turn away students who want workforce training due to crowded space or inadequate facilities. We have elementary schools with some of the largest populations in the state. The question reads, what do you feel are priorities the school board should focus on, and how will your experience or skills impact your work on these issues? What priorities, what do you feel are priorities the school board should focus on, and how will your experience or skills impact your work on these issues? Mrs. Pence?
Let me repeat that question.
Yes. What do you feel are priorities the school board should focus on, and how will your experience or skills impact your work on these issues?
I do feel like the number-one priority right now is our overcrowded elementary schools and an aging and outdated Triplett Tech, our Career Technical Education Center. They're definitely urgent issues. And our board needs to adopt a needs-based budget to address those properly. I've heard from many people who believe Triplett should be updated first, and that just shows how vital workforce is to this community. But at the same time, we can't ignore overcrowding in our elementary schools, so that's one of the biggest priorities. And, you know, the school board's role is to weigh the community input, student needs, and fiscal responsibility together. Another one of a priority is that we need to make sure that our students are, especially in elementary schools, are reading real books, writing with a pencil, and working out math problems on paper. And I will use my belief in that to kind of push the board to focus on policies that do eliminate, not eliminate, I'm sorry, that limit Chromebook usage, especially in elementary schools.
Thank you. Mrs. Litten?
My number-one priority when I decided to run was promoting respect and getting back to trusting one another and positive communication. And I believe we need to do that not only in the board, but also within our schools. So that is a top priority for me, and I think the people who are affected need to be brought into the conversations always before decisions are made about them. The second thing that I think is important is obviously the building programs. The formative years for me are the foundational years, the years where you get your foundation for future learning. And so I would support, first of all, an elementary school. I did hear Mr. Moore saying we need to work on both the elementary problem and also the Triplett Tech problem, and I agree with that. We have an aging Triplett Tech school that could expand, could offer more offerings if it were larger. So we need to look at that infrastructure. We need to work on that structurally, adding additional classrooms so that we can add some expanded offerings. And then the third thing I would look at is teacher morale. I truly believe that, and having been a teacher, I know the ups and downs, and there are times when your morale is so low, you say, "Why am I even doing this? Nobody cares." So I think we have to get back to supporting the well-being of our teachers and the school staff. We need to find ways to boost them all. We need to create strong support systems for them as they're working through some challenging times. That should always be a top priority for us. And I want our teachers to feel like they're valued, that they're supported, and that they can go into their classrooms and they can do their job.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Shabi?
The main priority, and I think it will trickle down to the others, is supporting our teachers. I know, I've made friends who teach at the county, there were seven left, including Teacher of the Year from a few years ago. And so many of my best teachers have decided to leave. So teacher retention and supporting the teachers is going to be gathering, because that is going to have an influence on education for each and every kid in their classes. So I'm out there advocating with my own different lovers, but on infrastructure, that is the second biggest one. We still have carpets in our elementary schools that we put in and maintain, so we decide to do the meaningful math. When I found out, I got nervous, you know, and I continue to get nervous to push for the infrastructure needs. There is no one thing. We need to build new schools, we need to add on to others, but we still have to fix all the problems in the schools that exist. We pulled a new elementary school tomorrow, and all the other schools still need to work. So we're in kind of a hurry with that, but in the fundraising, grant ordering experience and advocacy, I think I can help get us out of there faster.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
There's an ancient piece of wisdom that says, "The best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. The second-best time is today." And I was, I thought of that when I read that article about the joint committee, that many of the things about infrastructure are, we're behind on. We should have been doing this 10 years ago, but we're doing it now. And that is good news, but as has been mentioned earlier, that joint committee needs to continue their work and make plans that will impact generations of students. And I feel that's worth talking about. The students, excuse me, the decisions we make in the next couple of years as a school board impact generations. So I'm proud of my experience working with people who make tough decisions, tough financial decisions, challenging factors that require a lot of perspectives. And that will be something that's useful as we make big decisions that affect people for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you all. We will end with closing remarks. Each candidate will have one minute. We'll go from my right to left, and we'll start with Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I want to use five to 10 seconds of my time in silence. I would like each of you to think about a teacher that inspired you in your lives. The person that you thought about is who you're going to work for. The people that do the work, day in, day out, are those teachers in the classrooms dealing with the problems, but they have a plan, and they have information, and they have wisdom, and they have a life story that impacts those students. I would be, nothing would be greater pleasure than to be thought of as the teacher's candidate. I want to work for teachers to build the respect and to build those partnerships so that teachers can do, as Ms. Litten said, simply do their jobs. It is an exciting time to be in education. If you're listening all throughout the evening, other people running for things that are Board of Supervisors and delegate, education is a key part of any community. So when we think about the next five, 10, 20 years, we need to make decisions that affect, help everyone, and we keep politics out of it as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shabi?
The partnership, education is a partnership. It starts at home. It works into the classrooms with the teachers, with the education, school board, here, that's by the supervisors, with the delegates. Education is our future and our children's future. I have taken those there in schools and lived the life every day. I've had to go inside, and those other committees gives me a lot of insight into this. I also have two older children, a 30-year-old and a 28-year-old. So I have 20 years in between kids, and I went to schools in Pennsylvania, 20 years ago, and I've seen the challenges of education in my two generations of children. So it gives me a good background and kind of a unique perspective on what may be taking in front of the challenges their schools face, and it's about better schools together.
Thank you. Mrs. Litten?
Okay. My education background speaks for itself. I want to bring the experience that I had in the classroom as well as on the opposite side of that, the supervision side into the school system and into the community. The school board sets the policies. So as your school board representative, I will make informed decisions for you, I'll work with the Board of Supervisors in the county, I'll ask questions, and I'll listen to community feedback. But most importantly, we must think how our decisions are going to affect our students, our school professionals and staff, and our taxpayers. This should always be our goal. I will work to promote a positive climate in the schools. I want to be in the schools as much as possible, working with the teachers, hearing their concerns, and letting them know that I am their voice on this board, and I would do everything in my power to help them with their morale, with the support that they need, with the tools that they need to educate our students. So I ask that, with that in mind, if you think I am your candidate, that on November the 4th or in early voting, that you go to the polls and you vote Litten. I will support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Pence?
Tonight, you've heard a lot of ideas, but what matters most is this: A school board member should be a leader, and this means having integrity, being accountable, and remaining student-focused. I come to this role as an engaged parent with a child in our schools, living our schools' opportunities and challenges every day. My opponent is a retired educator and a grandmother, and while I respect her service, her perspective is shaped by experiences of the past and not the daily realities families face today. Our board needs leaders with a current, engaged perspective who stay connected to teachers, staff, students, and their families. If you want leadership that reflects your values, stays engaged with families, and ensures our schools remain focused on students and strong academics, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
In closing, I'd like to thank our partners again, the Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley, Farm Bureau of Shenandoah County, and the Shenandoah County Chamber of Commerce. Special thanks to everyone who helped out this evening, to the candidates for participating, to partner volunteers for helping, and to everyone who submitted a question, and to Angie Van, who volunteered her services to record tonight's forums. We will be posting the videos online soon, so stay tuned. I remind you to vote on November the 4th, if not sooner. Please have a safe evening and drive safe. Thank you.